Mr. Chase briefly went over last commission meeting and text my gov. Before we take a look at those, I just want to give you an overview of C Click Fix. I believe Mr. Reeseman brought that up last month and it's been kicked around the chambers over the past year or so. Next slide. Oh, do I have it? Nice. Technology. So, C Clicks Fix, the main purpose of that is it's an avenue to have citizens report public works type issues or code enforcement type issues. And then they can see the actions that our staff is taking in real time. It's not technically a notification system. It's a CRM system. It does have notification capabilities. However, it would require that a citizen download the application onto their phone and set up those notification alerts to be allowed to pass through to the actual device. So if you're really wanting to get your citizens informed on emergencies, there's some setup that they would have to do on that side of the house for that to work. The two that we currently have, Text Power and Text My Gov. Text Power is one of our notification system and it's specifically for electric utility usage. Currently, this system allows citizens to text in power outages, which then triggers an automatic status response through the duration of the outage. You as a citizen text in the keyword "power," the system recognizes your phone number, knows where you live, and then through the duration of the event, it's going to text you back the status of that outage all the way till the lights are coming back on. The system also has geo-targeting, and I know you guys have talked about this a little bit, and Brad had brought it up last meeting. Geo-targeting, for those that you don't know, is just a map. We circle the perimeter on the map. Any customers within that location that we have phone numbers for, we can send those out. We can do that manually with Text Power, but that's going to take an export-import from one database to another. It takes some setup. It's not ideal during an event. When our infrastructure gets up to date, that stuff is going to happen automatically. As soon as our responder system recognizes an outage, it's going to pull those phone numbers for us and blast those texts out. Text My Gov, on the other hand, that's where we put all our other notifications, and that's where we're handling those general alerts at this time. So Text My Gov has four avenues of communication for our citizens. Auto reply and response, that's based on keywords. If you text in the citizen, as a citizen bill or hours, you're going to get an auto-response based on those keywords with relevant, what we hope is relevant, information back to your keyword. Report and routing, those are those code enforcement and public works issues we were talking about. This is a workflow that we've set up. If you type in a keyword of "pothole," you're going to be prompted with a "thanks for reporting." Tell us where the address is. Give us a brief description. And then we're going to route that text message to the appropriate department. We also have group push notifications. And when you guys were talking last week about we did notify people, this is probably what you were talking about. The reason some didn't get it and some did is this is an opt-in subscription group. We have two avenues to notify people. We have geo-targeting, which forces you to get a text message, and we have opt-in. Right now, opt-in is all we're utilizing. So, opt-in, we've got three groups. We've got general alerts, which is where we send our boil water notice. We've got events and we have aquatics. Those events and aquatics use it quite frequently. If you want those general alerts, you opt in to that subscription, and as soon as we send out a notification to that general group, you get it. We sent out 90 boil water notices because that's how many people we had in the group. By the end of the event, we had 99. We see a lot of that when we have, excuse me, hurricanes. A lot of people will opt into the general alert group, and then they'll opt out after the event because they don't want notices all the time. So that's the difference with the geo-targeting and the opt-in. It's a choice, and it's a choice that staff really doesn't make. It's a choice that we need to be directed on. If you want to force notifications, we can absolutely do that. We can do that today. But the question is, do you want to do that? And how frequently do you want to do that? And what do you want to do it with? So just to give you an example, these are some of the recent Text My Goves that we've gotten. This is keyword "aquatic hours," and you can see what the system automatically sends back. It sends back hours, price. And one of our main goals in IT is to keep consistent branding and messaging, so we're always driving them back to the website. Almost every reply that we send out automatically includes a tag "back to the website." This was just recently for our fireworks. We had "Spangled Spectacular." Somebody texts in "fireworks," we send it out. And I'll tell you, during the event, we had rain delays. We had people subscribing to our events. Those people got alerts about those delays because they were subscribed to an events subscription. And then this is probably one of our top keywords, "bill." We get a lot of inquiries about billing. How do I pay my bill? How could I set up my service? And of course, we give them a little blip about what they need to do, and then we drive them back to the website because we know that data on the website is consistent. Example of a workflow, here's somebody who wanted to report a pothole. This first line back, citizen says hello. That second line is what everybody gets the first time they opt in, or the first time they even hit the subscription. We say hello. We give you a little direction, a little way of how to use the system. If you just want general information, just some keywords, if you want to report some public work items, or if you want alerts, we send all that out immediately. And then it goes through its workflow all the way through, and you can see at the bottom, we sent this message right over to Public Works as soon as it was done for them to handle. This is from the boil water notice. As I said, you can see we sent this out to 90 people. This was at the direction of the Public Works Director who called up IT and said, "I need to get a notice out." IT is never going to send out a notice automatically. We want to be really careful with our general alerts because we don't. They should be for emergency purposes. We don't want to inundate people. By the end of the event, we had 99 people because nine people had signed up during the event. Again, we see this during hurricane season. And then that, that was just the geo-map, which we already went over. These are the top 10 for July. One-word response. These are going to be those automatic keywords: "bill," "pool," "power," "consistent." Every month, those are the top three pieces of information people are looking for. And you can see down at the bottom, "Star Spangled Spectacular," and "Pipe Burst" snuck in there because it was July and those were the things that were going on. So these, these kind of technologies are not infallible. They take some massaging. Obviously, we don't have "Star Spangled Spectacular" up and available every month. So if somebody's going in, we've got a staff member that checks these programs every morning, looks at keywords, try to recognize unrecognized texts that are coming in and trying to adjust it. We can't ever perceive how people are going to ask for information, but for the most part, people are utilizing this now. We haven't, we haven't ran any campaigns to publish and let people know this. This is on the website today. It's been on the website for a while. It's on the very top banner, Text My Gov. We did a Facebook blast, a very minor one, when we first rolled this out, about 18 to 24 months ago. And upcoming, we'll be putting this in the billings, and it'll be in the newsletter that also goes out on the bills. Okay? If you folks have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
So when you say "text," the recipient must have a cellphone-type capability? And is the app that they have to download to have, is that a free app? Or is there a cost associated with that to them?
Sure. So C Click Fix of the three up here is the only app-driven product that you see, and that's the one that's not truly a notification system. The app for that is free, and you can utilize it without providing any information, but if you want to get that message box, that notification box, you do have to sign up.
So you would get an email instead, and you would sign up through the email for Text My Gov or?
Text My Gov, you don't have to do anything. You go on your phone, you dial a number, and you text "hello" to that phone number. That's it. Now, the target, the geo-targeting, that data would come directly from our customer service database. We would mine all of those phone numbers and addresses so that we could do geo-targeting if that's something you guys are interested. Again, right now, we're not doing that because that's a forced push to the citizen without any opt-in.
So we're two years we've been, we've been using this type of technology?
Quietly, and I'll tell you why. So quietly, because again, nothing is infallible. These kind of products, they do take staff on the backend watching, monitoring, so that we can try to teach the software and know what our citizens are asking for to respond appropriately. It's very frustrating if you've ever used these systems to text in a keyword that in your mind makes total sense, but get a, we don't recognize what you're trying to tell us back over and over and over again. So they, they do take a good six months to a year to flesh out, and that's with any type of product like this.
That's fine. So, but you said it went out to 90?
For the boil water notice?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how many people we had subscribed to the general alerts at that time. And then we, again, we see this during hurricane season, you'll see that general alerts, like people go on the website and they're looking for information, and all of a sudden, they see, "Oh, I can sign up for general alerts." That number during hurricane season shoots up to a couple hundred, and then it'll fall off again. People don't want, people don't want any more technology on their phones. Right.
They want to know why you didn't get it.
Right. Correct.
So, just like a high summary, I asked Sonya to come and provide the presentation today because she's obviously more detail-centric than I when it comes to IT stuff. But the, the presentation is kind of driven from a response from Commissioner Canal and the, the boil water notice. And so kind of lesson learned here is I think we have to push out some of the existing technology better internally to our departments to use as well as inviting the public in to use. And so we can do that now with Text My Gov.
We can.
The different, and so, and actually, kind of a lesson learned from this whole thing is we will endeavor to do that. We'll, we'll get with Lakefront and do some different pamphlets, and Sonya touched on that in her presentation. So we will do that moving forward. And I think the cost on Text My Gov was like eight grand a year-ish, something like that.
It's incredibly cheap.
Is what it runs. The C Click Fix is more of an application that Commissioner Reeseman talked to me about after the meeting, saying, "Hey, Eustace and Taverri's uses this."
They do.
And so that, so that would be your phone app. Each is a little, I think you get the, the message done with Text My Gov, but then kind of the Cadillac version would be "Tamarie, Text My Gov and C Click Fix." I think C Click Fix is like 14.5 annually to run.
C Click Fix is about 14.5 to 17. It's, it's based, pricing is based on demographics, how many citizens you have. And they do have an additional notification portion. I get weary about pushing out too many points of contact because then your message gets skewed across the different platforms, and you really want to consistent messages, but they're, they are available.
And then the only thing, open up to whatever question you have, because we're actually just looking for direction, and it would be, A, let's just push out Text My Gov for now, which is that will be in the works, and/or B, and/or B, do we, do we want to invest in C Click Fix? The only hiccup in there, and I don't want to get too much into the weeds, Sonya can probably explain it better than I, but there's just a little bit of a disconnect between Text Power and Text My Gov because we try to integrate the Text Power into the IVR system and all the SCADA stuff at the electric department. So there's, there's a little bit of a separation between electric and then the rest of the city water sewer electric because of the systems that electric uses are a little bit different than public works.
The glorious thing about--
You said three of them.
We would need, we would need the three. Well, you need, you need Text My--
What's that cost?
Text Power is in play now. We have that now. I don't have the pricing off the top of my head, but the glorious thing about Text Power is that it will be integrated with our responder system. And our responder system basically knows there's an outage when a transformer goes down, and then it just intuitively says, "We'll have a probability of this many houses go down." When we have that infrastructure in place in a few years, the responder system is automatically going to know who those customers are, have the phone numbers, and send that to Text Power to go out. We can do that now manually, but it would be really difficult during an event. But that was the goal of Text My Power, is to have that responder system automatically know who's out and send them a text message. So that's on the horizon.
I have a question. Text Power only lets customers know when the outage is out. You can't text to Text Power to say, "I have an outage." Is that correct?
That's, that's exactly how it's initiated. You, as a citizen, text into Text Power right now so that you get that kickoff workflow and stay up to date during the status. Right now, the citizen initiates that.
Oh, okay.
That communication back and forth. Future, that won't be necessary because responder will know, and it will tell Text Power, send this person an email or a text message.
Say, "Infrastructure in a few years," what are we talking, like?
Money-wise?
Money-wise or?
Money-wise.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's a big figure. It's a big figure. We've got some work to do.
So you need direction, you're looking for direction from us as to which of these avenues?
Well, do you guys want to spend the money and do the C Click Fix? Is, you know, at that number and with our systems, you know, 14.5?
C Click Fix is definitely a customer response system.
It's not a crazy number, you know, and that's something that's going to get integrated into, it'll go into IT, and then IT is pretty much an allocated fund anyway, so all the other departments pay a share of IT. So it's a small cost across the city. But in my conversation with Sonya, it felt like the, the easy-cheap fix is to do better with the technology we have. Okay? So I think we, so we're going to do that. Then the question became, do we want to add on and do the C, C Click Fix? Small number, but, so I wanted your input, and I wanted to provide this information to you all so you see that we're trying to tackle some of the questions that have come up.
So C Click Fix is bread and butter, and what makes that a standout product, again, is not on its notification side. If your goal is notifications, that's really not the product. C Click Fix has a really great app where as you as a citizen can be out jogging and see a pothole and stop, bring up your, it's going to geolocate you, it's going to put the address in for you, you're going to take a picture, and you're going to hit submit. From that moment forward, there's a little dot on the map that's your report, and you can see all of the communication from staff on their efforts to fix that problem through the duration, and it archives and everything. So if you go onto Eustace or Taverri's app, you'll see all these little dots on a map, and those are all things that citizens have reported. They love it. It's not a notification system.
Just opens the communication for the public to our staff to let them--
Correct.
I agree with that.
But it's really a public works kind of application.
I would agree.
It's just my opinion that going back to the notification process itself--
Yes.
If we've been working on this for a couple of years now, and we only got out 90, I mean, to me, that seems like--
A total failure. And I agree with you. I think a lot of that is marketing, awareness. We need, it truly is, and that's a challenge with any of these products. If people don't know they're there, they're not going to use them.
Correct. That's why I don't want to know if, I'm not sure I want to spend more money on trying to fix something that we haven't tried to fix yet, would be what adding C--
Could it be notified in the utility bills to state where--
Yes.
Going on in what we have so that people are aware?
That's where we're headed to push out the information.
Okay.
So immediate, if you guys don't want to go C Click Fix, we'll be putting out notifications. We'll probably do, we'll get it out in the newsletter, you know, a bulletin to your utility bill. We'll do a ditty with Lakefront to get it on, Lakefront TV, and then we'll also do the website. So those are, those are typically our three big avenues to get the information out. And then internally, we'll just, we'll have some department conversation talks, making sure specifically with Public Works is utilizing this for boil water notices.
And the price of C Click Fix is an app for an individual to purchase to use?
No, it's free for the resident. For us to get the software up and running so you opt in is about 14.5 a year.
Okay. I'd never heard the pricing of each one. That's what I was asking. Okay, sorry.
Text My Gov, it's about 8,500. C Click Fix is about between 14.5 and 17.
In your opinion, do you think Text My Gov is easier for people to use with the keywords not maybe all being in there? Or do you think C Click Fix would be a better option where you don't have to use those keywords?
That's a good question. I think C Click Fix honestly is, it depends. C Click Fix has some great landscape when you open up the app for general announcements to drive people back to the website. They're very button-driven, which people like. On the other hand, Text My Gov has the ability to have as many keywords as you want so we can capture more inquiries and responses through that kind of application.
I think it was just a, a lack of communication on our part as the city because I've had this Text My Gov for two years, and I have yet to receive an alert on any--
You didn't know you had to opt in?
Oh, I'm opted in on all of them.
I'm sorry. You didn't get the boil water notice?
No, I did not.
Because I looked for your phone number specifically.
Yeah, I'm opted in in Leesburg alerts, all of the events, and I didn't get one alert. So that's--
I, yeah. You weren't one of the 90, huh?
So I will tell you, this conversation was driven by Mr. Minner because after I watched the commission meeting from earlier this month, I went back to the office and pulled about five people into my geomapping and just sent them a text message without telling him I was doing it, without alerting him, and I forced that message out, and that was an immediate response. So I'll be curious to talk to you later to see why you're not getting those.
Would we, could we do a forced one for one time, and then if people want to opt out, they can opt out?
Yeah.
That way it's a, everyone gets it?
And you choose where you want it more.
And that's an easy way to let everyone know.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I personally like the C Click Fix option for the public work side of it. I think the feasibility of it, of someone, like you said, walking, seeing a pothole or something that needs to be addressed, it takes a picture, it geolocates it.
I can give you some statistics on that part as well. Taverri's and Eustace do use it. Both have had them since about 2019. I believe Taverri's has about 900 reports submitted by citizens since 2019. Eustace since '29 has about 300. Technology is a really hard sell for people at this point. We're so inundated with applications and having to sign up and remember different passwords that that's where those campaigns come in. That's why we need to campaign more with Text My Gov or any one that you're utilizing to let people know that they have options to use it.
So what direction, Jay? You got any, you got the ball rolling on this, man?
I would just, I would just say whatever's, whatever's easiest to use, and, I mean, I do think we need to do something to get a notification out. I mean, I didn't, I didn't--
I need notification.
I didn't realize that we even had any of these things. So I don't think your average citizen realizes it.
Right.
I think maybe start with the utility bills would be, would be a good option.
But maybe, maybe, maybe try to get the information out--
Sure.
And see if we can get a little better penetration before we start--
If that's that--
Adding more stuff to something.
--sports directive, we definitely have some, some ideas. Like I said, we, we weren't really pushing it because we wanted to massage it first and make sure that what we were responding to was appropriate.
Good with that.
But with your go-ahead, we will, we will definitely start a campaign.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Sonya.
You're welcome.
All right. Do you figure you know where you're going on that?
I do.
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go to public comments, item four. This section is reserved for members of the public to bring up matters of concern or opportunities for praise. Issues brought up will not be discussed in detail at this meeting. Issues will either be referred to the proper staff or will be scheduled for consideration at a future city commission meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes, and would you please give your name and your address when you come up? Are there any public comments? Please come in.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Jones. I'm from over on Fourth Street. Is it on?
Yes, ma'am.
Stephanie's Place with a Twist. I bought in some packages because I had originally sent out a certified letter to Mayor Jimmy Berry and also to the planner event, Ms. Linden. I have those packages with me, and I wanted to share them with you all in regards to the effect that was at my business that I occurred during Bike Week. So if I can pass these out, I would appreciate it. Therefore, you all can actually see how I felt or what I experienced, if it's okay.
Yes, ma'am. Got your name?
Yeah.
Give it to you. Can you take mics? She's not here tonight. Thank you.
When you open it up, I have a letter there. Like you said, I don't want to go into too many details, so if I'm going too far into details, just let me know. But I feel more comfortable if I just read the letter instead. And this is a complaint to Special Event Manager and Mayor Jimmy Berry, District 5. I'm writing a business, excuse me, I'm writing as a businesswoman of 38 years and operating of Stephanie's Place with a Twist Salon, Store, and Boutique. Also cosmetologist downtown Leesburg, Florida, 34748 since 2017. Formerly known as Stephanie's Beauty Salon, established 1986, 218 Mike Street, Leesburg, Florida. Hereby date May 8, 2024, have an obligation to my business. Stephanie Place with a Twist located at 117 South Fourth Street, Leesburg, Florida, downtown to complain to the party's address, which I already said I complained to the governor, to the mayor, and also to the event direct leader. I'm asking for a certain amount of money from the city of Leesburg, from Florida because of pop-up wall, which you all have pictures. You'll see my, the pop-up wall and all the different things that I was affected by. Excuse me. A pop-up wall with businesses in front of the business during Bike Week. The city issued the permit to set up in front of my established business, blocking my business during Bike Fest, a three-day event that affected my establishment and loss of salon, salon clients, customers, and Bike Fest exposure. Merchandise sale, restroom use, and opportunity for businesses to grow and make revenue, revenue on, for my salon, which I just added in there, store and boutique and make more, excuse me, I'm nervous, store and boutique. Make homemade sweet potato, sweet potato trees. I do these type of things, and I'm nervous, I'm just like, kind of like fumbling over what I'm saying. This is my first time ever doing something like this here. I don't normally complain about anything. I'm just a person that just come in and do what I have to do to help anybody in the city. I anticipate expecting to make money at the Bike Fest. All, all business was included, included downtown to participate in Bike Fest. My business was, was blocked by a pop-up wall with businesses in front of my establishment. The dates were April 26 through the 28th. Rather than just keep going into this here, the majority of the businesses here, they all got to do their part. But if you look at mine, they had no access to get, nowhere to get into my business at all from one end of Magnolia to Main Street, and there are businesses on that same, same street as mine that was able to actually participate. And I feel like if I was invited along with everybody else to Bike Fest to make money, I should have. In the past, my businesses had been blocked, but once I complained or even said something to, you know, the different events planners, it wasn't blocked anymore. I didn't show you any of those pictures, but you all have let me be a part of Bike Fest, and my business was not blocked. But for some reason, it was blocked. The street, the business across the streets also got to participate. My business was the oldest business that-- My business was the oldest business that did not participate, and I'm always involved in doing things in this city, not just with my business, but helping the community, helping the homeless. I do quite a bit. You may never hear about me, but I am very well-known in the city for helping out.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I did receive your letter.
Yes, sir.
The city manager and I did converse about it, and I am very sorry that you feel the city slighted you by blocking off your business. This was the first year that our new entertainment division was running the event. I certainly hope that at future events, more notice is given and made so that that doesn't happen again. I personally am very sorry that that's how it worked out. But, you know, Bike Fest is a huge generator for the business community in general, for the City of Leesburg, and some sacrifices have to be made. I mean, electricity has to run somewhere, the, you know, the things have to be set up to entice that many people to come in and spend money. And I'm sorry that it affected you, but, you know, Pine Street affected a whole lot of businesses when we redid that, and we couldn't offer them compensation because we're improving the environment, you know, just with this. We, you know, I'm sorry that it happened to you, but we can't...
Not out of disrespect, I'm not concerned about Pine Street or no other street. I'm just concerned about my business and what took effect over there, not being rude or disrespectful.
No, they're fine. I understand.
And again, like I said, they came and they left. You all gave them a permit to come and block my business. I was also invited as a business owner to be a part of Bike Fest. I have no problem with the decision that you made, but I should be compensated because my business is open every day. They came for one day, true enough, they made money. I didn't make any money. I'm faithful in this community, in this city. I've been here. I haven't just opened up a beauty salon or a business. I've been here since nineteen eighty-six in this area, working.
I understand, I understand.
And the email that I received from Mr., I don't want to mess up your name.
Minner.
Minner, which I don't know what was going on with him, but he was just being, you know, just derogatory, telling me about, you know, what I wasn't going to get and things like that. And like I told him, you know, when I went in to see him, I would prefer just to, you know, talk to the board because he was letting me know, why don't you just sue us? I have no intentions on suing the city. I'd rather come and try to work out things with the city. Again, I don't care how low it may have looked, what I may have, you know, lost, I still feel like I am, I should be compensated for something for my business. And I don't know whether this was direct or indirect as to how it was set up, but again, it was wrong for my business to be not the oldest business that made money.
Yeah, the only thing I would add to Mr. Jones's statement there was, I don't think my response to Mrs. Jones was derogatory in any fashion. It was very professional. It was very succinct. The members of the commission were included in on it, so you saw my very succinct, direct response, which was an apology that it happened, and no, we will not remunerate her for any losses.
But I deserve it.
So in our conversation that we had, I provided some other options for her, and that, I think my approach was direct, candid, and professional. The only word I would quibble with is derogatory or some type of sliding, which it was not. Unfortunately, I had to deliver tough news, and I respect Mrs. Jones's opinion.
Any other questions, guys?
She's referring to the vendor tents. The vendors were located in front of her business. So the tent that you see in the pictures that Mrs. Jones showed, that's a vendor who said it's Fourth Street, I believe, right? Fourth?
That whole road was actually blocked.
So Fourth Street, I believe it's the west side of Fourth Street.
Except for across the streets and on the side where Magnolia is, if you notice, that business had got the chance to make money. The business across the street artists also, they made money. But my side was the side that they literally shut down. I mean, you can't even notice that it's any businesses back there unless you just, you know, like just fumbling back there just to be just, you know, trying to get out of the crowd. So it don't even, like, my business even exists, and it's been there downtown. I've always had a business downtown. I just moved on Fourth Street, but like the last seven years, but I've always had a business downtown, even when they was actually remodeling behind the library here, when they did, right here where you all are. I was there. I was down on Mike Street. I've been quite a bit of places and have always been faithful to this city and working in this, you know, downtown. So this is not just something I just brought up to, you know, just now or complaining about it, but this is what has happened to me, and I was affected by it.
And no notification was given to any of the businesses?
They let us know that, you know, certain streets was going to be closed off, and they did tell us, but they also told us that we had to write. And they, like I said, they did close, they really didn't close it off. They kind of like just put that tent up in front of my business, and people were still able to go, you know, up and down that, as you can notice the pictures and see.
I think, you know, the sidewalk was open.
No, sir, it was not open. You can see it, you can see it on my side. Those pictures, they tell, you can open up. I did a lot of work, look inside those pictures. I did a lot of work, please look inside.
I think our definitions of circumstances are different. They weren't notified.
That's from Main Street through Magnolia.
Remuneration of lost business is a very difficult conversation. Remuneration of businesses losing revenue during a city event is a very difficult, or city projects, a very difficult conversation for the city. There's obviously on occasion times where we disrupt private business, but obviously the overwhelming position from the city is that special events or projects are done to increase business long-term. That's our argument. We did notify businesses. We followed a plan. Perhaps next year, that plan needs to be adjusted. The sidewalk was open. There were vendor tents in front of the business, making it harder potentially for people to go to that business. As a result of all the things that I just said, I very succinctly and candidly told Ms. Jones that I denied her request as a city manager. I then informed Ms. Jones of other avenues she may want to take because she obviously disagrees with that denial. Her next immediate option was to come to you all as a sounding board for my denial.
The purpose of me coming to you all because I actually decided to go in to meet Mr. Minner, and in meeting him in the end of our conversation, he says to me, because I don't know if he was offended, but that was not taken off of the computer, but I actually really did get in touch with Governor, I may say his name wrong, DeSantis, I really got in touch with him. And he gave me options, which you all received that letter as well.
Yes.
And when you received, you also received the letter, and at the very end, you let me know, smirking, what I could do. And I was like, no, no, I'm not trying to sue, just tell me, you know, what I can do. And you were like, well, you can sue, you can sue us? Or, you know, I'm like, I'm not going to do that. And I was like, what else can I do? And then you told me about the meeting, which is today. And I said that I will come to this meeting. You gave me another option, and I was, you know, was getting like, start talking, but I didn't want to just keep on talking and say the wrong things, so I wanted to keep it peace with you and me when I left out of there. But you did let me know today there would be a meeting, and so therefore, that's why I'm here today because, like I told him, you know, I'd rather hear more than one person speak to me rather than just him talking to me, because when I first got the email, I was surprised rather than who I had sent it to, because they let me know, Ms. Linden, that she was out of town and that she would respond to me basically that Monday, and before I could even get a response from her, he literally had already responded to that email. So I never even got a chance to even talk to her anymore, and that's what really landed me here.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for? No? Thank you.
So what is the, what is the, say something, the end of it?
I think the city manager gave you options you can...
So you prefer if I just start trying to sue the city, you know, just being, doing something like that?
No, I would prefer that everybody at Bike Fest make all the money that they could possibly make.
No, you couldn't have, because you didn't let me make any money.
But there are businesses that suffer during Bike Fest because people can't get it.
My business was the oldest one suffering indirectly or directly, rather was.
That is for the greater good.
That is not right. I'm going to keep talking until you can put me out or whatever, but I'm going to tell you, you all was wrong for, that was the oldest business, and I'm going to just go ahead and say it, not being racist, it was a black business, and it was the oldest business that was actually blocked. Yes.
Again, I apologize that your business was blocked. I apologize for that.
I'm not accepting any apology because I know that you all don't really mean it, and I appreciate you listening to me, but you all are wrong for blocking my business, and I really do not like the answer that Mr. Minner gave me because I think that he was rude and very disrespectful, but I will leave out. And again, like I said, I'm going to continue to do business here in this city, and I'm not one of those ones that go around, you know, just ignoring people in their businesses and making them feel bad because I lost money. Even if you didn't give me what I asked for, you should have gave me back my money that I lost, and I know you see that on there as well. I should have got something.
Any other public comment? You've got a comment?
I had a question. Was Ms. Linden, was Maggie able to talk at all, or she never did?
She never communicated when we sent there because he was already there and just started talking to us. Excuse me. The second email out, all of a sudden, he just shot that back to me because she said, I would talk to you that Monday. I haven't heard from her yet. And she, they'll tell you, I've never been rude or anything.
I think you were referred directly to the city manager?
No, I didn't.
And he answered the question?
No, I didn't. No, I didn't.
Well, I mean, that's what happened.
It addressed to, just what it was addressed to.
Okay, but the city manager answered your question.
Again, I'm not a person that likes to argue. I'm in good spirit when I need to.
Well, that's not arguable. He wrote you and said we won't pay.
And I'm just letting you know, I'm going to go because I don't go low, I go high.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Mr. Mario Perez. I'm from twenty-three oh eight Ashwood Avenue, and on... On five thirty twenty twenty-four, there was, there was a tree branch that fell on one of the poles, so it got to get replaced, but the pole, and they're charging me for, to fix it. But the pole been there since nineteen eighty-eight, the first tap they do. And then the last one was in twenty sixteen, and I was just wondering if there's any way I can, you guys can help me with that?
If you, if you, my suggestion, get in touch with my office in the morning.
Okay.
Ask for me.
Okay.
And if there's some type of claim we need to file, we'll get it filed.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, because what happened was that it's a cable line post that was in front of the house on the left of the house when you're facing out of the street. And that cable line post had been slanted for years, so they went to cut down the trees, they were trying to get those trees off of those wires, because the trees were actually growing on the wires. And I'm Stephanie, I'm Stephanie Mania, his mother-in-law. My daughter couldn't be here because she just got out of the hospital. But, so what happened was when they took that one limb down, it wasn't a limb, it was actually a branch, it hit the wire, and that was so weak, it leaned the post over. So we had to get emergency services to come out and replace that post. When they replaced the post, they told us that post had never been inspected since two thousand sixteen, and it's supposed to be inspected every two years. So we received this in the mail for thirty-eight hundred dollars to replace that post, that it was our fault.
Okay. Come see me in the morning, and if you have issue with that, just contact my office, and I'll go over it with you in more detail.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. And the number for you, do you have a specific phone number that you can...
Yeah, Melissa in the back will give it to you.
All right, thank you so much.
Any other public comment? All right. We'll move on now to item five, the consent agenda. Routine items are placed on the consent agenda to expedite the meeting. If the commissioner staff wish to discuss any item, the procedure is as follows. One, poll the item or items from the consent agenda. Two, vote on remaining items with one roll call vote. Three, discuss each polled item and vote by roll call. Are there any items anyone would like to poll?
I'll make a motion to approve of the consent agenda.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Jay's got the second. Roll call?
Commissioner Conell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Um, yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. We'll move on to item six, the public hearings and non-routine items. We'll begin with six A, which is second reading of ordinances. Someone please introduce six A one.
I'll introduce six A one to be read by title only.
An ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, amending the boundary lines of the Village Community Development District Number Fourteen pursuant to Chapter one ninety Florida statutes and providing an effective date.
Move for approval.
Second.
Are there any questions regarding this item for Mr. Miller? Is there any public comment on this item? I think we just get a roll call.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Conell?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Will someone please introduce six A two, three, and four?
I'll introduce six A two, three, and four to be read by title only.
Six A two, an ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, annexing certain real property consisting of approximately one point nine three plus minus acres, being generally located southwest of Montclair Road and west of Thomas Avenue, lying in Section twenty-one, Township nineteen South, Range twenty-four East, Lake County, Florida, provided that such property so annexed shall be liable for its proportionate share of the existing and future indebtedness of said city, providing that such annexed properties shall be subject to all laws and ordinances of said city, as if all such territory had been a part of the City of Leesburg at the time of passage and approval of said laws and ordinances, providing that such annexed territories shall be placed in City Commission District Two, excuse me, and providing an effective date. Six A three, an ordinance amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the City of Leesburg, changing the future land use map designation of certain property containing two point three three plus minus acres from Lake County Urban High Density and City of Leesburg Low Density Residential to City of Leesburg Industrial, for property generally located southwest of Montclair Road and west of Thomas Avenue, lying in Section twenty-one, Township nineteen South, Range twenty-four East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date. Six A four, an ordinance of the City of Leesburg, Florida, changing the zoning on approximately two point three three plus minus acres from Lake County R six Urban Residential to City of Leesburg R one Low Density Residential to City of Leesburg Spud Small Plan Unit Development to allow for nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty-four plus minus square feet of indoor industrial flex space for property generally located southwest of Montclair Road and west of Thomas Avenue, lying in Section twenty-one, Township nineteen South, Range twenty-four East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval?
All right. If we could get Mr. Miller up. Actually, Dan, if you'll hang on just a second, if anybody's going to speak, Grant, would you please swear?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If anybody here is planning to speak on any of the second reading items or the non-routine items, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand so you could be sworn in. All right, do you swear or affirm that all testimony you'll give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan Miller, Planning and Zoning. This project is called the Thomas Montclair Industrial Flex Project. The overall proposal is to create an industrial flex space development consisting of approximately 2.3 plus or minus acres. It's generally located west of Thomas and southwest of Montclair Road. The property consists of three separate parcels. The action requested is one, to annex 1.93 acres and that consists of the two properties lying in the east-west direction on the south side, fronting on Thomas, these two properties here. Then we have a small-scale comp plan, which would take all three properties and take that from City of Leesburg Low Density and Lake County Urban High Density to City of Leesburg Industrial. And then finally, the third case would be a rezoning from City of Leesburg R1, which is Low Density Residential, and Lake County R6 Urban Residential to City of Leesburg Small Plan Unit Development. Under the conditions of the Small Plan Unit Development zoning, this is industrial flex space development consisting of just under 20,000 square feet of buildings. That would be indoor light manufacturing, building trades, and contractors. Something similar to what you see down at, across from the bowling alley on Main Street at the Leesburg Industrial area down there. Would have warehousing, printing, indoor storage. Dark sky lighting setbacks are substantial, 50 feet on the front and 50 feet on the rear. There'd be a 10-foot landscape buffer planted with a solid opaque fence required adjacent to any property zone residential. And then 35% open space, two floors would be the maximum height. Two access points will be required. There are architectural standards required in the PUD, screening of the mechanical units, those types of things as well. And there is a minor area of wetlands on the backside, on the west side of the property that will be protected under this PUD. And then all the usual other PUD requirements in terms of the types of grass that can be used. We prefer the Zoysia, the Bermuda, the Becca, things like that. Everything has to be on city water and wastewater, so there's no wells or septic. Mr. Chris Zipper of the Centaur Architecture Firm is here if you have any further questions.
Okay. Any questions for Dan?
I have questions, please, Mr. Miller. Will you explain again the surrounding zoning designations that was on one of the detail sheets?
Yes, ma'am. Can we back this up to the zoning? Or it may just need to go forward, I think, Anna.
And then it was, yeah.
Here is, this part is in Lake County. The colors are in the city and the aerials in the county. So it would be the annexation of these two properties, and that's an R1, which is a low-density residential here. And then you have some industrial-type uses down here and up along here. And then on the next slide, you'll have the county zoning, I believe. If we could go to that one, please. Could we go to the next slide, Anna? Sorry. Okay, here would be the Lake County zoning. That's where you have the R, I believe that's R6, and this is some commercial zoning here. So it, from the standpoint of the uses that are currently there, it matches in this area quite well. Now, this back over here on Woodland Drive, that's residential and along Montclair. And so, which is why we required the 50-foot buffer, the big buffer back here, the protection of the wetlands and the fence, and limited it to two stories. So everything has to, within the PUD conditions, everything has to be inside. We didn't want outside noise, dust, vibration, those kind of things. So we took into account the concerns and talked to some residents in here at the Planning Commission as well. And I do not know if any of them are here or would like to speak tonight.
And that would be the residents on the Virginia Drive or some?
Yes, ma'am. There's Woodland, and then I believe Virginia is back a little bit lower. There we go.
And then one more question, please. Will that go into the Carver Heights, Montclair CRA? Or it's not included?
Let us look in that. I do not remember off the top of my head. The top, this parcel on the north is already in the CRA. The other two are not. They could potentially be added.
Yeah, and Commissioner, you asked me, and I didn't get that answer. Grant, so we annex this parcel, it wasn't specked out in the original CRA boundary description. I'm gonna say it doesn't go in the CRA unless we go back and modify the boundary.
The CRA boundaries, that's right.
So the answer is no. It would not go into the CRA and the new growth from it would be a general fund revenue. We would have to go back and modify the Carver Heights CRA boundary and adopt that parcel. And so, you know, that, you know, being a homeroom county, it's something that we could do, but I wouldn't recommend doing it. We would need to take a comprehensive look, I think, to see what we have around that area brought in to make it worth our while. I mean, if we keep on bringing in every little singular piece, I think we're gonna agitate the county and probably rightfully so.
So I'm just asking, so over that corridor where the residential side is lying right against the CRA, that diamond shape, that's not, none of that is included and that couldn't be added? So it's not a benefit to the CRA far as tax purposes for this thing? Okay.
It would, the new tax revenue generated from that development would go completely into the general fund.
Okay. And this was selected to go to this area based on the industrial that's already there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions for the petitioner? Is there any public comment on this item? We've got all three on the floor, so we'll vote on item two first. Roll call?
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Conell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reesman?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Now, could we please vote on item three?
Commissioner Conell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reesman?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. And we'll move down to item four. Have a roll call on that item.
Commissioner Reesman?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Conell?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. All right. Someone please introduce 6A5?
I'll introduce 6A5 to be read by title only.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, changing the zoning of approximately 37.7 plus minus acres from PUD Planned Unit Development and C3 Highway Commercial to PUD Planned Unit Development for property generally located north of County Road 48 and west of US Highway 27 as legally described in Section 14 Township 20 South, Range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval?
Second, just so we can talk about it.
Thank you. Mr. Miller, would you please?
Thanks, sir. This is the CR 48 Bright Leaf Residential Project PUD. Consists of approximately 37.7 plus or minus acres, generally located north side of County Road 48 and east of US 27, directly behind the Publix Shopping Center. The request would be to amend the current zoning. There is no change requested for the future land use. Overall, there would be requesting a PUD zoning for the entire property, which would allow future construction of a proposed residential development consisting of a maximum of 250, I believe it's 253 attached, single-family residential units. When I say attached, single-family, we're talking about townhouses, which would be platted and individually sold. Currently, the property is zoned PUD on the north side and C3 Highway Commercial on the south side. The existing PUD on the north side allows 116 townhouse units on the 20-acre portion on the north. The existing C3 zoning on the south side of this property would allow all the standard commercial uses in a C3 zoning. So what the applicant is asked to do is simply take the entire parcel and move it into townhomes, therefore removing the C3 zoning on the south. Under the PUD description, you've got 253 single-family attached units. No other uses permitted within the development. About 50% of those 253 would be front-loaded townhouse lots, meaning garage in the front, and the remaining half would be rear-loaded. That helps with diversity of design. And there are design and architectural standards, which requires the builders to choose at least five facade items such as stone accents, shutters, banding bay windows, and other features. Again, we require dark sky lighting, significant open space of the 35% minimum plus 25-foot buffer tract along the eastern and western boundaries, a 40-foot, a little bit larger along the northern parcel, 40-foot buffer space, and a 6-foot privacy fence along the northern boundary. There would be two access points on the property, a boulevard access on County Road 48, and then an emergency access on the southwest corner of the property over here. And then another point connecting into the shopping center where the bank is, to the southeast there. Each primary port, each primary access point would have a decorative entry feature such as concrete, bricks, stucco, walls, something like that. And then they do have to stub out to the west in case there's potential for future development back to the west. Development must be on city water and wastewater. Any wetlands and flood zones are protected. Of course, the standard provision on St. Augustine grass, a minimum of 1.16 acres would be dedicated to recreational uses. And then trails are being offered around the dry retention and flood compensation areas and an amenity center at the head of the trail. And the recreation component of this would have to be constructed at the time when 150 units are complete. In discussion with the applicants, they did have a couple of minor changes that they're requesting. I wanted to go over with, if I could, Mr. Mayor. There were a couple of areas where it says Louisiana, I believe it says Louisiana Acres on the plan. It's supposed to say Louisiana Avenue. There's a couple of small things like that. Phase 1 is in there twice when it should say Phase 1 and Phase 2. And there's a, we need a correction in the numbering in the PUD. I think the autocorrect caught that in the Microsoft Word. And then the only thing that's of any substantial change that they're requesting is a cap on the types of units in Section 4D1. And staff is okay with amending that as long as the total number of units remains the same.
Correct.
So that's really it. Mr. Andrew McCown and Mr. Sean Myers are here to speak to this development as well.
Questions for Dan?
What'd you say, Dan? 253 units?
That's correct.
And is this age restricted?
Uh, no, does not, does not at this time need to be age restricted. They do have the option if they choose to.
Mr. Miller, did you say?
But we cannot control that. Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me, did you say one car or two car garages? I didn't hear.
Um, I, you know, I forgot. I've got so many of these going. I believe it's... I know it's a minimum of one, and I cannot remember. I'll have to, if you give me a minute, I'll find that while we're talking.
And there were some in the front and then some would be in the back?
Yes, ma'am. Some front-loaded, some rear-loaded. And the point was to try to vary that up a little bit so that there'd be a little less traffic.
While Dan's looking for that, did we have questions for the petitioner?
I don't have any questions. I have things I want to speak about, but not directly to the petitioner.
If you wanna, you wanna go ahead and, while Dan's looking for?
As I've spoke many times here, we're talking about another 253 units back onto a two-lane road. And there's only two ways to get off that road. 50% will go west. Well, west is going to take you to the intersection of 33, 48, and 470. It's a four-lane intersection with no turn lanes in it. It's absolutely horrible now. Plus, you know, I asked Dan about age restriction. I just wanted to make a point. If it's not age restricted, it's more kids in our schools. Our high school's at 90% capacity, based on Lake County School Board latest concurrency report. How many more units are we gonna bring in here? Our roads are not satisfactory. We, you've got 30,000-plus lots already in this city that can be developed. I don't know if we need to keep bringing more lots in here until our infrastructure and school systems catch up. It's just, the traffic is a nightmare down there at that intersection. And we're gonna add another 253 units to that intersection? It's absurd.
Dan, do you recall the original PUD on this? How many units is left?
116 on 20 acres.
How many?
116 on 20 acres.
And then it still would be a commercial application up front?
Yes, sir.
So cars coming and going?
Either way.
I mean, either way. I mean, they already have that.
There's a difference, Jimmy, between 253 houses and some commercial and 116 units. Now, the 100, the 253 units are gonna draw more traffic. I will assure you, will draw more traffic to that road and that intersection. And we don't, we just don't need to keep adding all these lots down here with the present road and school systems we have.
It's already approved?
It's approved for 116, okay, but not 253.
With a commercial application of course.
With a commercial application.
Which would represent about equal amount of traffic.
We need commercial development down there. We don't need any more houses down there.
Well, that could be an argument, but the car argument is...
Well, no, there is an argument.
Well, what your argument is, is the landowner now should not be able to do what they want to do with the property.
They can do what is presently zoned. We shouldn't contribute to the problem.
It's not going to change the traffic problem either way.
Sure it will. Yes, it will. I mean...
Well, it depends on what the commercial is, the amount of cars coming and going. If it's a gem right there that has hundreds of...
The houses are gonna bring more people there daily basis because they live there.
Okay.
The commercial may draw people out that already lived there to go there, but those houses are already there.
So do we have an answer for that one yet, Dan?
The PUD requires two spaces per unit, but it doesn't specify on a garage.
One end and one in the driveway, is what that's gonna be.
At a minimum, yes, sir.
So it's a one-car garage, is my guess. So do we have any other questions for Dan? Okay. Questions for the petitioner? No questions? Allison, you okay? Nothing for the petition? Is there any public, would the petitioner like to say anything about this? You know, we'll give you your shot too if...
I appreciate it. Andrew McCown with GAI Consultants in Orlando. I'm the planner and applicant on behalf of Bright Leaf. Sean Myers is here as well. We do have a presentation if you would like us to go through the aspects of the community that we're proposing, specifically to answer your questions, Commissioner, about the traffic. I'm not a traffic engineer, but we did submit a traffic letter with the application. And what the letter stated was because there was the, both the townhome and the commercial portion, that combined actually was greater than the traffic that would be generated by the townhome only. It wasn't a huge difference. They were pretty similar, and I can get you those numbers.
Well, I mean, no disrespect, but I've not seen a traffic study yet that hasn't said, sure, this road can handle another 10,000 cars a day. I mean, I don't hold a lot away with these traffic studies. I really don't. But like I said, no disrespect to you or your traffic engineer.
Would you guys like to see the presentation?
I don't, I don't need to see it.
Allison would like to? Sure, go ahead.
All right. So again, my name's Andrew McCown with GAI Consultants. And first up, we've got a brief introduction from the developer, if you want to introduce yourself.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Sean Myers, 1133 Louisiana Avenue, Suite 101 of Warner Park. Appreciate the opportunity to come here and briefly introduce this project. We've enjoyed working with Dan and Candy and Max on it. And I think they were very thoughtful in guiding our design and working with the property owners also on delivering some housing that we thought would add to the community of Leesburg. We've been doing residential development for about 25 years, primarily in central Florida. Recent projects, we did one in Eustis, which was 213 units, one in Hammock Oaks in Lady Lake, and one in Orange City. We're really attracted to Leesburg. You have a lot of attributes, I think, makes it an attractive place for housing. I understand the challenges you're gonna have with schools and roads, and we do, you know, have to contribute to the schools and get a capacity letter before we can do any kind of housing to make that fit, and the same thing with transportation. But that's definitely always a con... the same thing with transportation. But that's definitely always a concern with that. But appreciate the opportunity to be here and hopefully answer your questions and show you, show you about our project.
So to jump forward to get straight into the, the interesting part with the actual site plan. So the site plan is proposing two phases. The first phase being the southern half, and the second phase being the top half. This is what Dan was referring to with the phasing. That's, I actually should say phase two. But as he said, there's a central park with amenities, floodplain compensation and retention. There are two different types of units that you see, and they're delineated by the two different kind of shades of brown. These internal blocks here are rearload, a rear-loaded product, and around the perimeter is a front-loaded product. And that goes into the request that we're specifically making with regard to a change to the ordinance that I'll discuss at the end. These are expected to be rental units, but the project is going to be individually platted so that it can be fee simple also. So the points of access, we have not only the main entrance and the connection to the, the Publix, we also have two planned connections to the adjacent property, and also an emergency stabilized entrance. Again, those are the, these are the rear-loaded product, the townhomes that have garages in the back. So the, the rear-loaded product, we did confirm, is a one-car, it's a two-car garage because there's no driveway in the front. The front-loaded product is a one-car garage with a driveway in the front that is deep enough for parking a car. This is depiction of what the rear-loaded townhomes would look like. And then that's a depiction of what the front-loaded townhomes would look like. Open space, as Dan said, we have a, a wider 40-foot buffer to the neighborhood to the north with a standard buffer around the other edges. Planned park spaces, areas where the front-loaded townhomes are actually fronting onto a park space. And just some examples of what the amenities might look like. So this is my last slide, and it's really discussing the, or highlighting the requests that we're making about the specific ordinance language. There is the maximum 253 townhomes total, and we're requesting that the limits per type be removed, because we have several things that are kind of controlling. We have the, the total number of units. We also have the standard that all of the periphery units must be front-loaded townhomes, because that's going to help buffer. There's not going to be any garages in the back against the, the adjacent property owners. So if, if for some reason, the, the, if there's a reason why we can't achieve the 100 and, or the 116 rear, rear-loaded lots in the center, that means we can't make it up by adding additional units around the outside. So we're, we're kind of hemmed in on, on too many sides with the way that it reads now. So we are requesting that the language that limits both types to a, a cap be removed. And that's, that's the end of the presentation. Happy to take any other questions.
Any questions for the, a question? Is there any public comment on this?
No public comment. I think we can do a- Just one more thing. I mean, I've said pretty much what I want to say tonight, but the last thing I do want to mention is that, you know, I mean, how many times over the years have we had projects where the citizens get up there and just basically beg you, please, don't do this. No more lots, no more traffic on these roads. We should listen to the public. I mean, we're elected officials who we're elected by. We should do what they want. And the, the general public doesn't want any more of this. They want to slow this stuff down some. They're, they're tired of the road systems being congested. Our school systems are pushing max. I think, we need to listen to the public. I mean, that's who we should answer to is the public, and we should do what the general public wants. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in and, and make a couple of comments on the quasi-judicial process again. For rezoning cases, those really fall within the quasi-judicial realm. And so the way that works out procedurally is if the applicant submits their application and their application meets the requirements of the code, then the burden has been met by them. And the burden then shifts to opposition to demonstrate how the plan does not meet the requirements of the code. And so when we're thinking about, I guess, input from the public about general concerns they might have about things, that is a little more appropriate for consideration when we're looking at annexation and when we're looking at future land use, comp plan changes. When we're looking at rezoning, it's a little more narrowly focused in terms of that particular property and has moved outside of the sort of legislative-type decision-making. So, you know, in order to demonstrate that the application does not meet the requirements of the code, there would need to be competent substantial evidence that has been furnished to demonstrate that the code requirements have not been met. Now, that could come by way of factual testimony from, from members of the public. If there's issues about opinion, you know, whether certain technical standards might have been met, then it's a little more difficult to take the public's input on that issue unless they have some particular knowledge or training or experience in that area in order to give sort of an informed, credible opinion on that. And so the, you know, it's not to say that the public's input is not valuable on the rezoning issue, because it is. It's just sort of a different standard of, of how you have to take that information. Is the information credible? Is it reliable? Is it something that we could competently base a decision on? Or is it, is it not that? And so that's really what, what you just need to focus on, again, for the rezoning cases more so than anything, because those fall within that trickier or tighter standard, I guess, in terms of needing the competent substantial evidence. So if it exists, if it's been demonstrated that perhaps the application does not meet code requirements based on competent substantial evidence, then you, then a denial would be completely appropriate. But if there's not competent substantial evidence to refute the, the applicant's, I guess, initial satisfaction of the burden, then it's a lot more difficult. And so I just wanted to kind of go over those points and, and make sure everybody was clear on that. So again, rezonings are a little, a little tighter standard than the annexation and comp plan amendments.
Thank you, Grant. Any other comments?
Excuse me.
We'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunnell?
No.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Someone would please introduce item 6A6?
I'll introduce 6A6 to be read by title only.
Excuse me. An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, establishing the Grace Key Groves Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, providing for authority and power of the district, providing for the Board of Supervisors of the district, providing for the district budget, providing for functions of the district, providing for miscellaneous provisions, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion. Anybody have questions?
I don't have a question.
Is this an item grant? Do we need public comment? I mean, this would not-
I think if you want to invite public comment, would be okay for this item, just to cover that, yes, sir.
Is there any public comment on this district?
I would just say I'm Kyle McGee from Q-Tech Rock LP.
Please come up. I didn't realize.
No, just Kyle McGee from Q-Tech Rock LP on behalf of the petitioner here, and, you know, happy to answer any questions if there are any.
No, I mean, you guys don't have questions on this, this issue? And any other public comment? Roll call.
Commissioner Cunnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Someone please introduce 6A7 and 8?
I'll introduce 6A7, 8, to be read by title only.
6A7, an ordinance amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan of the city of Leesburg, changing the future land use map designation of certain property containing 2.4 plus minus acres from general commercial to low-density residential for property generally located north of Hill Street and east of Penn Street, lying in Section 22 Township 19 South, range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date. 6A8, an ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, changing the zoning on approximately 2.4 plus minus acres from C3 Highway Commercial to City of Leesburg Spud Small Plan Unit Development to allow for eight single-family residences on a property generally located north of Hill Street and east of Penn Street, lying in Section 22 Township 19 South, range 24 East, Lake County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Move for approval?
Second.
All right. Dan, would you please come up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Penn Street Habitat Project. The overall proposal is to create a small, new neighborhood constructed by Habitat for Humanity. It will consist of eight units on approximately 2.4 acres, generally located north of Hill Street, on the east side of Penn Street. I think, if I remember correctly, that's the old Burger King, and that is the Italian-Greek restaurant, Takis, maybe?
Yes.
And so there's, there's Penn Street there. First case, small-scale, small-scale comp plan, future land use designation going from general commercial to low-density. The second case would be the rezoning, and that would take the zoning from C3 Highway Commercial to small-plan unit development. It's an infill project, eight detached, single-family units, no other uses. Lot sizes range from 5,700 to 7,500, all with 60-foot widths. Setbacks are the standard, 25, 7 and 1/2, 18. It's a landscape buffer and solid opaque fence required adjacent to property zone commercial, which would indicate a fence along here. Dark sky lighting, 35% open space, two floors maximum height, two trees in each yard. And the standard PUD, small PUD. Ms. Danielle Stroud, who is the executive director or president, I forget, for Habitat, I think Danielle may, may not be here tonight, but is she here? Sorry. Oh, there you are. Sorry, Danielle. So she is here as well, if there's any further questions. Just eight houses.
Okay. Any questions for Dan?
Yes, I have one, Mr. Miller. Just want to clarify again. The homes will be, the back of the homes will be facing Penn Street?
Actually, there's going to be a street coming down here. So they'll front on there. I think there's one or two houses that will front on-
On the back of there, okay.
Right. The houses will front on Penn Street and the internal street.
Okay.
So you won't be seeing backyards.
Okay. And will they, they will be comparable to the home that's downtown behind the old gas station?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly, the one I was thinking of is the one on 12th Street.
Just want to clarify.
That was, they're comparable to the one on 12th Street. We verified that at the last meeting, yes, ma'am.
Thanks. That's all.
Any other questions for Dan? Do you have any questions for Danielle on this project? Is there any public comment on this project? Just for the public's information, this is also, along with being an infill, this is one of our favorite things, because Habitat is working with Leesburg High School. Those are the students that are going to be building and learning to become contractors by having the experience to build these homes. So, you know, it's the perfect collaboration with the, the city and the county, you know, the county and with private enterprise supplying supplies. So it's a good deal. So let's have a roll call.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunnell?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. All right. So that was on number seven?
Seven, yes, sir.
Now, can we get a roll call on item eight?
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Someone please introduce 6A9?
I'll introduce 6A9 to be read by title only.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, enacting Article 7, School Zone Speed Enforcement, Chapter 21 of the city's Code of Ordinances, providing for purpose, intent, and definitions, establishing a school zone speed enforcement program, and authorizing the use of speed detection systems within the city, providing for program implementation requirements and designation of school zones, providing for enforcement and administrative procedures, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Move for approval?
Second.
All right. Little discussion. Anybody got comments on this? I think, because this does affect the public, we'll also let the public, any public comment on this? Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Cunnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Let's move on to 6B1.
Excuse me.
I'll introduce 6B1 to be read by title only.
An ordinance of the city of Leesburg, Florida, consenting to the inclusion of the city of Leesburg, Florida, within the countywide municipal service taxing unit for the provision of ambulance and emergency medical services as adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Florida, providing for the city to be included within said MSTU for a specific term of years, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date.
This will lay over until-
August 12.
August the 12th. Al, if you would, just give us just a quick-
That's the housekeeping ordinance that is required by statute for the county to set the MSTU Municipal Service Taxing Unit for the ambulance district.
There you go. All right. So we'll have a second reading on that again, August the 12th, here at the chamber, or at the Fred Morrison Room. Someone please, let's see, we're on to, was it 6C1?
I'll introduce 6C1 to be read by title only.
Resolution of the City Commission of City of Leesburg, Florida, Designating the City Code Enforcement Board as the local hearing officer pursuant to Chapter 2023-174 Laws of Florida, Appointing Existing Staff to Serve as the clerk to the city's local hearing officer pursuant to Chapter 2023-174 Laws of Florida, Authorizing the Approval of Photo Enforcement Services Agreement between the city of Leesburg and Altamont Inc., and Providing an Effective Date.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay. Once again, we'll have a second reading on this, Andy.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution.
That's a res-.
Discussion, go ahead. Nothing from, nobody? All right. Roll call.
Commissioner Reisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Cunnell?
Yes.
Mayor Berry?
Yes. Moving on to item seven, the informational reports. Anybody got a copy of the financial reports from 2024? Any questions on those? Okay. Any city attorney items?
Any reports this evening, Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
City manager items?
No items.
Roll call.
Commissioner Berry?
I'd like to just say kudos to the Hope Coalition for their contributions for the Back to School Bash on Saturday. Great success, second time around, and we're able to prepare our Leesburg students for a thriving school year. I think it was over 900-plus backpacks.
We had a thousand, and then Amazon brought 100, and then some other ones were donated as well.
Great turnout. And I would like to thank everyone who participated. And I also would like to add, please, for Friday, August 9th, the Street Live Art, Street, Street Live Art Walk on August 9th on Fourth Street from 5:00 to 9:00. There will be DJs, artists walk with our very own Richard Carvin, Executive Director, as the featured artist. And there will be 25 vendors showcasing on Fourth Street, open mic at 8:00 PM. And we encourage all to come and participate at the restaurants downtown and have dinner, as well as some entertainment art, artists with a purpose. Thank you.
The 9th?
August 9th.
The Hope Coalition did a phenomenal, put on a phenomenal event. The lines were wrapped around the building, around the sidewalks, so many families and kids that everyone came together to help, and I appreciate the city stepping up. We were able to make a small contribution as well. But from businesses to different organizations, from all the principals, it was just a really good collaboration, and looking forward to doing it next year.
Mayor Burry?
Nothing tonight. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.